Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, August 28, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting vote order at the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmond?
Here.
Mr. Heretic?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Chandler?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As we start your public work session this evening, I want to start with a couple of items relative to hot topics. I'd like to first recognize our Utilities Director, Mr. Brian Foster. This hot topic, we want to actually preview a small video for about four minutes relative to some of the new design products that we have for web and telephone in terms of utility billing and interface. So, Mr. Foster?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening. I want to just give you a couple of brief comments about our new system, and then we have a short video to show you. But what we're -- have just implemented is a new automated phone system and online portal for people to check their account information, also to pay their bill. The phone piece is an interactive voice response system, or IVR, so it'll recognize your voice when you speak to commands, or you can use the keypad on your phone, very much like when you call other utilities. It's a very similar system. You can check your account information, your history, your billing history, payment history. Most importantly, of course, you can pay your bill. You can pay with Visa, MasterCard, or Discover, as well as with a check. And the key piece for folks is that there's no convenience fee. When you used to pay with official payments, there was that convenience charge. No longer is that the case, so it's a much more convenient option for our customers. And it'll also update our system in real time, so we'll know when people make a payment, especially if they're paying close to their -- to the cutoff time, if they were scheduled to be -- have their service disconnected. We'll know in real time that they've made a payment. The system also has a call-out feature that will call customers one time if they're -- once their bill becomes past due, but also call them one time if they're scheduled to be on the cutoff. While they're on the call, they'll have the option to pay should they so choose. If they don't answer, it will leave a message on their voicemail or answering machine, and they can call back or go online. The online piece is -- the link is right on the homepage of the city's webpage under the online payments. It's also a direct web address. I have some cards that I will pass out to a few folks. It just has the address and phone number on there for you, and if you want to pass those out to folks as well. You can do all the same things on the web that you can over the phone. You can make your payments in the same fashion as you would, and that you would with other online transactions, if you're used to doing online transactions, same thing, same way. All that information's encrypted and secure, and it's not stored, so, you know, it's encrypted. We don't store any of that payment information, so it's a very safe way to transact their business. So, the final piece with all this new technology that we put in is that we can also do credit card payments at our -- in our business office downstairs. So if you come in and want to pay in person, you can also now pay with a credit card, which that did not used to be an option. And again, there's no convenience fee charged with that, so it's just like any other retail establishment. The video that we're getting ready to see, we developed to play on PC TV as part of both the programs that Dana Woodson does with the various city services, but it'll also can stand alone as a service announcement, so to make folks aware of the new availability of these services, and also sort of give them a very quick tutorial on how it works. So, if there aren't any questions, I'll have Ms. Waters play the video, and then I can answer any questions at the end, should you have them.
Hello. I'm Brian Foster, and I'm the Director of Utilities for the city of Portsmouth. I'm here today to tell you about some new customer service features we've implemented to make it easier to access your account and transact business with the city. We've launched a new automated phone system that you can use 24 hours a day from the convenience of your home. This interactive voice response system, also called an IVR, lets you do a number of features, including accessing your account status, such as how much your bill is currently due, when is your bill due, is it past due. It will also allow you to access past billing information, past payment information, and also allow you to make a payment using a major credit card or check. Customers can dial 393-5008 anytime, anywhere to use the system. The IVR will greet you and let you know the various types of transactions that you can do. Just simply follow the prompt.
Thank you for calling the City of Portsmouth Public Utilities Automated System. If your call concerns the water or sewer convergence system, please hang up and call 393-8561. Please listen carefully, as our menu options have changed. You may use this system to make a payment. Your current account status, your billing and payment history, request a payment extension. What would you like to do? The service address is 5000 Main Street. Your total balance view is $145.28. Please note that if you have made a recent payment, it may take up to three business days to post to your account.
After you give your account information, if you'd like to pay your bill, you can do so using your Visa, MasterCard, or Discover card, or your bank debit card, or with your personal check. Simply enter the appropriate information at the prompt to process your payment. If you have access to a fax machine and would like to receive confirmation of your payment, simply enter the fax number when called for. Another feature of this system is the ability for the IVR to call customers when their account becomes past due, or if service is scheduled to be disconnected. The IVR will call and let the customers know their current account status, and also give them the option to pay while you're on the call. Should you not be home, the IVR will leave a message on the answering machine or voicemail, and you can call back at a convenient time. We've also launched a companion internet system that will do all of the same features as the IVR phone system. To access this, you can simply go to the site and click the online payments link and select Public Utilities. Or, if you would prefer, you can type www.portsmitva.gov/MyWater, and it will take you to the same location. As you can see, all of the basic information is right here at your fingertips. You can, on the main screen, you see all the current account status, how much the charges are, when the charges are due. You can also check your billing history, your payment history, and most importantly, make the payment. Simply fill in the information in the appropriate fields, click the "I authorize this transaction", and submit payment. All of your information is secure and encrypted, and you can print the confirmation screen to use as a receipt, should you desire. Both the automated phone system and the internet system are available to you 24 hours per day, 365 days per year. You no longer have to come down to City Hall during regular business hours to make a payment, or remember to put your check in the mail. You can conduct your business when it's convenient for you by dialing 393-5008, or online at
Great job.
That's great.
Very good. Yes, sir. Any questions on that? And you're going to start running that tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll start running it on PC TV, yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Good job. Thanks, sir. Next?
Okay. The next hot topic we have, I'm going to call Deputy City Manager Brandon Godfrey to the table, talk to you about the Core Services Initiative. Of course, Core Services, you know, represents a process that we've gone through over the last couple of years to identify all the services we provide internally and externally, with the overarching goal of being able to arrive at a point of having community understanding as to what those services are, to work through a process of really prioritizing, you know, those most important and core services. The ultimate goal in a process like that is it really helps the community to determine, you know, with public input, what some of your basic services or your base budgeted services will be from year to year. Of course, there's always the discussion in terms of the ancillary services that you look to provide. Most importantly, I wanted to have Mr. Godfrey walk you through our next phase of the process, because we are actually about to start visiting some of the civic associations in the next month or so, beginning next month, to kind of start ramping up as we would get towards the budget process. So we've got that information, along with some other information that Mr. Pace's department is working on in terms of our community survey. Those will be two tools that you will have that will really help you in the budget process, really be able to talk to the fact of having heard from the general public and having gathered citizen input. So with any further ado, Mr. Godfrey?
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As you mentioned, I just want to spend a few minutes updating you on some upcoming citizen engagement activity with regard to the Core Services Initiative. As we head into the planning stages of our next biennium budget, we're reaching out to citizens and stakeholder groups for their input in prioritizing core services. You recall that staff developed a comprehensive list of about 210 services that meet certain criteria that qualify them as core services. The challenging part in the citizen engagement piece is how do you get groups of people to discuss as many as 210 services in any sort of reasonable -- and so, we developed a strategy to meet with community groups and to focus specifically on the services that are non-mandated and external. And you may recall, when we were developing the comprehensive list, we identified certain services that were mandated, and we went through and validated and verified where there was a legal or regulatory mandate. And we also categorized services as either internal or external. And about two-thirds of all of them were mandated, about a fifth of them were internal services. And so, what's a manageable number that we can talk to citizens in these community groups is looking at the ones that are not mandated and that are external. And so, we've begun working with presidents to schedule time on their agendas, as well as a couple of other business groups, to schedule time on their agendas in the coming weeks to have that discussion about those services and prioritizing them. And we've also developed a survey instrument to send out to the members in advance, and then to bring that information back to the meeting and be ready to have a conversation at the meeting. So we've kind of developed a survey to do as a homework assignment, and it'll ask the participants to gauge and respond to the relative importance of those services, as is either unimportant, all the way up to very important. And then at the beginnings of the respective meetings, or prior to the meeting as possible, we'll collect and tabulate the completed surveys. And then at the appointed time on the agenda, the members of the performance management team will lead in discussions about, first, an overview of the core services, a tabulation of the individual surveys, and then engage that group in a group discussion and develop some consensus of that particular group, of the priorities of the present. And then we'll talk a little bit about the purpose of the exercise and how that will be important in our planning in the next biennium and budgeting for outcomes. Very quickly, this is a list of the groups that we have scheduled in September and October. We have confirmation on all but a couple of them, but it's a dozen Civic League groups, Civic League meetings, as well as the Portsmouth Partnership and the Old Town Business Association. So, I'm sure you're going to see some of us at those meetings. We'll see you, as a lot of you make it out to regular Civic League meetings anyway. And so I just wanted to make sure you are aware of what it is we're doing and interacting with citizens through those meetings. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Let me, first of all, ask, when you start this meeting, will we start off with the definition of what is a core service? So citizens or no? I mean, because the takeaway is you don't want people running out saying, "I was at the meeting last night, and I think they're getting ready to cut out a library, or getting ready to cut something out, and this is another tricky way of doing it." Have we thought that far along, how we, in a city, if you were to start one tomorrow, here are the things that everybody would agree that's core, and then all of these other things, even though they're not core, that doesn't mean they're not important? I mean, do we get into --
I'll take the first part of that. Yes, we will. We'll always make that definition, but remember, over the last couple of years now, remember the budgetary outcomes sessions that we did just this last year. All of those started to focus and lay the groundwork for the core services piece. The pieces that we've walked through council with in the last two years have really laid the foundation, so all of what we're talking about now starts to be a reminder of what we built on in the last couple of years.
Got you, but I'm still talking to the public who thinks something is up. While you're here, you're not the government, and you're not here to help. What's the real deal?
For the past two years, it's been a consistent tutorial. And we won't deviate from what that's been.
I mean, is that a listing, to the mayor's point, is that a definition that you can start the presentation off with?
Yes, sir. You know, I mentioned we'd do a core services overview to sort of cover what we've done over the last year and a half or so, and how we defined first what the criteria were going to be, and then how those services met those criteria, one or more of those criteria. So, yeah, that'll be part of the overview. So, you know, we're bringing that group and that particular meeting into the discussion. After having brought it this far, we'll try to bring them up to speed as to what work's been done on what defines a core service.
Along with how we reach that point, and why this one is a core service, and maybe theirs isn't, that sort of thing?
That's right.
That'll be covered in the presentation?
Yes, sir.
And be advised, and we'll be glad to kind of pull that information back out. This basically is a 30-minute version of the same exercise that this council had gone through. It's just taking it to the next level, cascading down.
That's good. I hope the citizens take an opportunity to show up and listen to the -- I mean, we had some, the Model City thing that we did a while back, I thought that was great. I thought it was poorly attended, and I think we had four or five different sites where we set that up, where we allowed citizens to break out in group and session, and gave a, pretty much, a scenario of where we are as Portsmouth, but we called it Model City and had breakout sessions to discuss, what would you do, how would you balance the budget? And it was kind of interesting, some of the feedback we got from citizens, understanding what we have to go through as a government and the decision piece that we have to do. So, I thought that was great. I just thought we didn't have enough participation. It wasn't our fault. I think we had four different sites, where I think there was one Children's Museum, one at TCC. So hopefully, with the civic leagues, they'll engage their citizens and the neighbors that come out, so they'll actually understand it, so we don't get to the point where we're having to defend that somebody's trying to shut something down and cut something out, because, I mean, it's an opportunity for politicians to go in there and mess up what you're trying to do, and we don't want that to happen either. But, yes, sir, Mr. Whitehurst.
In the final analysis, when we start talking about cutting services, will you go to this list and say, "These are the core services we'll keep, the rest of them we won't"?
You raise a good question, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I think what I would say in answering that is this is a process that actually gets folks more familiar with what the services are, and then, as they're coming, becoming familiar with them, it does help in terms of your prioritization. I mean, if we were talking traditional core services, traditional core services is potable drinking water, police and fire, education, you know, transportation. I mean, those would traditionally -- now, granted, whether the state provides it or local or whatever, but, you know, quality of life services, that would be your core. Some of the ancillary services would be things like your parks and recreation, or those other services that are needed by certain populations in your society, but may not be the masses. Might be social services, behavioral health services. Libraries. Libraries has probably taken on so many different uses now, in terms of being workforce development centers, as well as libraries, though. But that's kind of an example, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I think that'd be great. Again, as long as we're articulate and make sure that we are conveying that to the people, so there is no misunderstanding, I think that's great. I think educating our folks, going to our civic leagues, doing that is a great idea, because we are going into tough times, and it may be a piece that could help us all with the budget process. Anybody else have questions?
Are there other civic leagues that you're going to present it to, or is that just a one?
These are the ones that I have confirmed at this point, with the exception of Long Point. I'm still trying to reach them. I kind of looked at the city geographically, and I knew that out of 60, as many as 60 civic leagues, I couldn't hit them all. And we kind of strategically grabbed the largest ones, and those that are, you know, in a, you know, that covered the city geographically and demographically as well, and then also the business sector as well, trying to get them involved.
That may utilize your schools, too.
You may want to, if you can't hit them all, Brendan, make sure the civic league presidents are talking to other civic leagues in close proximity. Maybe they can have a joint meeting, so you don't have to try to hit all of those, because that might be virtually impossible in the timeframe that you're looking at doing it. So, maybe having some joint civic league meetings.
You mentioned a good point, and one of the things that we've talked about strategy-wise is, of course, this is kind of a first phase, and based on what feedback and input we've toyed around, first, would we do some general sessions, again, that could be at City Hall or what have you, or try this approach first, and based on that feedback, you know, we may be able to pull together some additional sessions. What I hope that you may not have to do is, with so many civic associations, that you end up going to one, and there's only two people who are there. You know, so to use the best of the time for the citizens, we figured, let's target the bigger ones first, and then, based on the feedback and participation, you know, tailor it to see how we can best reach others.
I would suggest, Mayor, that we look at putting it on our access channel, similar to what, I guess, Brian is doing with the billing thing, and also having it available on our --
He taped one of the sessions at one of the civic leagues, so everybody can see, here's what went on in Cavalier Manor and this.
Either do that, or do the presentation to the camera in one of the rooms up here, and also have it available on our website, because --
Bad idea.
Because you may not even attend in those civic leagues, I dare say that you'll get a whole lot of people.
Three to five percent.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Good job. Let's see where we go with this.
The next hot topic that we had, continuing with development in the community, of course, two weeks ago, council did pass a resolution that talked about our inmate population, but more so, the focal point was on the redevelopment of the Civic Center site. Of course, we recognize that some of the movement, in terms of, I think, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office have already moved to the new court facility, and it will probably be early September that the rest of the facility will vacate to the new facility. So one of the things that we had mentioned in some of our briefs is, you know, we want to try to kind of keep the process in front of you and make sure that we're continuously getting council feedback. So one of the things that we want to do tonight is, Paul has pulled up some renderings to give you an idea that if we did vacate the Civic Center site, number one, you know, we talked about the cost of demolition, what does the site look like if it's demoed? And potentially, with some of your development ordinances that you have in terms of your downtown master plan, waterfront development strategies, what are some potential looks that that site could have? I think the overall goal is to really have you all see that, get some feedback from council, and see if there might be interest in moving forward and sharing this thing with certain groups like the EDA, you know, to see if there's some interest in maybe partnering, to start some conversations, even with the development community, to see if there might be some interest, you know, in site development. Mr. Hall?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chandler. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. As Mr. Chandler mentioned, we also wanted to take a moment to not only focus on some of the pretty pictures, you know, planners always have pretty pictures, but take a minute to focus a little bit on some of the planning that has occurred to date for this piece of property, really is ultimately adopted back in the downtown master plan and waterfront development strategy in 2009. And again, as Mr. Chandler mentioned, add to that some additional visualization pieces on the waterfront economic redevelopment potential that exists in that block next door. The site that exists today is a full-city block, roughly 210 feet wide by 520 feet long, a total of about two and a half acres. Just to orient you, this is the Civic Center block here, City Hall, the 801 Water Street Building, and of course, Crawford Street, County, County Street Parking Deck, and Columbia. One of the more important city planning features that's so prominent in this photo and in these existing conditions is that lack of connectivity and continuity along County Street. Back when we were updating the comprehensive plan and during the development of the downtown master plan, in addition to the most received comments we received on why the city put a jail on the waterfront all those many decades ago, the second most heard comment we received is, "Why doesn't County Street continue through to Water Street, providing additional public access points to the waterfront, but more importantly, opening up the view shed along County?" Those of you who have traveled County, you can start to see this sort of solid wall and that visual blockage, if you will, all the way back from the Social Services Building, if not further west, and opening up that view shed to the water's edge and getting the city that connectivity to the water from where we came. So eventually, in preparing the site for redevelopment, not only is demolition important, but planning for that view shed to be restored and planning for that connectivity to continue along County Street really becomes paramount as well. In preparing the block for redevelopment, you'll see how much prime downtown land is opened up for development, and the resulting demolitions would now provide for two downtown development pads, both of which should be greater than an acre in size. Now again, back in 2009, the downtown master plan focused on this block specifically as part of a special area study. There are a couple of those included in the document. As you'll recall, the master plan identified this area as having some of the most valuable urban components found anywhere downtown: views to the waterfront, a strong thoroughfare network, large sites to accommodate new investment and redevelopment and growth, connectivity to an important event venue, that being Intellos next door on this side, and a really good moderate daytime employment population. You'll see here in red, I broke that page out of the adopted master plan, some of the envisioned buildable pads here on the Civic Center piece. This, of course, would be the street across where the --
Police Administration.
Police Administration building is, and of course, the desk ink site. It really wrapped all of this whole corner in altogether. We even took the footprint drawings one step further and came up with this great watercolor rendering. We use this presentation and this piece a lot when we went out and spoke to the public and in getting public input about trying to visualize some of the changes and some of the mixed-use development we wanted to encourage downtown with this master plan and with some of the code that we brought forward to City Council that was then subsequently adopted. And I'll call your attention, I'm actually, the view of this property is not standing on the Police Administration building, it's actually standing in the middle of the parking lot on the desk ink site, looking back at -- this building should look familiar, that's actually existing City Hall. So these will be the steps up from Crawford. For the development that would be located at the desk ink site, it was envisioned, again, to try to reinforce the mixed-use nature of downtown and to try to set the precedent and reengage the street network and re- and activate the street, if you will, some type of corner outdoor dining, corner café, corner coffee shop. Nothing significant, but enough to get some life back out on the street. And of course, looking across, if you are looking across today from this surface parking lot, you would see the corner of the existing building. And so, when we went through the public input phase at the time, and when we went through and put all of that public comment together, those building types and that form of development for downtown is what came forward as the citizens' preferred option, and so, of course, that's what made it into the final document and then into zoning. that's what made it into the final document and then into zoning. So, again, now, if I'm back on the Civic Center block site and having it prepared for redevelopment, I take that footprint drawing that was in the master plan, combine it with the watercolor, and sort of combine them into more of a 3D model of what's envisioned for the blocks in this plan. I can start to see the form of development. I've taken that exact watercolor, I've taken those footprints, and now tried to bring some buildings up out of the ground, start to get something that looks like this, probably something on the order of some five-story mixed-use buildings that can take advantage of some of the existing public investments downtown, especially in the adjacent public parking decks. You've got a huge public investment in the parking deck here, and of course, County Street deck is here. All of these uses are allowed and encouraged, all of these uses being ground floor commercial, office, residential, all of those are now allowed by right as part of the downtown zoning ordinance, and you can really start to visualize what the economic impact and change will be on the built environment. And of course, again, not to segue off the pretty pictures too much, but we know we've got that demand for downtown for each of those sector types and each of those uses, and we've got a 10-year demand, this is an executive summary chart of that larger market analysis we concluded with at the time, in terms of the amount of additional dwelling units that we need downtown, the amount of additional square footage we should expect to see be demanded over the next 10 years, as well as the retail opportunities. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be more happy to answer any questions.
Let me, what about the surface parking over there on Water Street? Is there any reason why we hadn't looked at that? I would think that could be combined.
You can start to see what a great cool image that would be when we start to then populate this same drawing with the development potential here, start to populate it with what's envisioned for Desk Ink. You can start to look at, again, going back to the adopted master plan, what's envisioned for this half of the block, and you can start to see what the new picture of downtown starts to be painted like.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, on the study, on the demand study, is that post or pre-recession study?
I mean, this was done in '08, so it was starting in on it, and, you know, at some point, we'll need to update it. The consensus all along has been, it's not so much that it would materially affect this council, but basically take them and just shift them back to a later point in time, and we wouldn't expect any material degradation of those expectations.
The other thing, I think it came to light, and some of my colleagues may recall, that the Desk Ink site, when Dan Aston proposed the development there, then we had the proposed development down at the former Holiday Inn site. Came to light that utilities on Crawford Street would not support a lot of development, and seems like to me, I recall that we got some, an assessment of what was needed and what the cost would be. I guess my question is, obviously, you've got to have the utilities there to accommodate the development. So, what's the plan, and have we done anything towards that at this point?
Timing is everything, and we're in a really good point. Timing this block and the parking lot piece and Desk Ink are all within that Sector 1, Phase 1 of the utility master plan that Mr. Foster and the Utilities Department are starting with right now down at Washington and then will be working. So, I mean, they're going to be working diligently over the next 12 or 18 months.
24.
24 months to get that done, and all of these base assumptions and all of these future growth have been built into that model, and those are the improvements we're actually constructing right now.
So, that phase will take care of the problem of accommodating development? Or are there other phases associated with that?
Remember, it was a four quadrant plan.
Right.
And this is the phase that's in play now.
Okay.
And if you remember when we were talking about the original Circuit Court building that was going to be on Desk Ink.
Right.
Remember, we were talking about a pump station that would have been in the foundation of that. Remember, that site shifted to the site that TCC was using across the street from Patty O'Brien's, and now that is the Washington Street site that's under construction now. So, that is the pump station.
That's the pump station for that.
And I'm glad that we decided not to put a pump station there.
Get some money.
Any other questions or comments?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
I'm excited about what I've seen and what I'm hearing. In looking at that piece of property, have we or will we look at other areas similar to our areas such as Baltimore Harbor to see what type of development took place there that we might be able to use some of their ideas here?
Absolutely. That's a real important piece in understanding what can be done and what has been done in other downtown environments. We try to stay real active and abreast on what those developments are, how those development deals will put together, principles in those development deals, and we use each of those as learning opportunities and bring those back. Yes, sir, absolutely.
My question with the surface parking on the water there at Water Street, Paul, was only that if we did go out to the development community to try, start making a little noise to get some feedback that makes sure they don't think we're limited and want to do that, if somebody's got something that they'd like to do that goes all the way to the water's edge, we're interested. Is that right?
Yeah, and probably over the last, I'll say...
You see what I'm saying? A lot of times they get it confused, this was the guideline y'all gave us.
Remember, council put an initiative out about two or three years ago that you wanted to market and develop a lot of the properties that you owned. In that timeframe, probably in the last four years, I know we've had two separate development interests in the Civic Center parking lot. So, that message has been out there, and it carries, and again, you know, our main focal point this evening was really to focus on the Civic Center blocks. Of course, there's the downtown development master plan, and each week or so, we can probably talk about different segments, but our main focus was to say, okay, if you had that site available based on what you see here, we're just really just showing mixed-use development.
I got you. I'm just saying from a developer's perspective, if I'm going to invest, I want to go all the way to the water to protect my investment because I don't know what you're going to do in the parking lot if I come here, and I don't want to shortchange that whole analogy.
Yes, sir.
You see what I'm saying?
But even as ED or the Economic Development Department would market, this site through the EDA, they've continuously worked on sites like North Pier, Desk Ink, and Civic Center Parking Lot. So, the main thing would be for that particular developer who might come and say, hey, I want all three parcels. It will be important, number one, what are they going to do with it, and it's important that it meets the interests of this council.
I got you. Vice Mayor?
Is there anything we should be doing now?
Yeah.
We do have some money left. We should be spending for one-time projects, maybe to make the land more valuable.
Relative to Civic Center site?
The whole plan is here. Is there anything we should be doing?
Well, what I would hope for, or a recommendation at this point for council's consideration, is that we do take the next step and have some collaborative conversations with EDA to see if there's some opportunities to talk with the development community, maybe even some initial marketing of the site, so more awareness is created in terms of the acreage that it's available. I think that process will help us determine, are there developers, because remember, we said the demolition cost is about 2.8 million? So, that will help us know, is anybody in the development community, number one, willing to develop the site and pay for the demolition, or is there any deals that can be worked at in between that, where even if we were doing some aspect of the demolition, then maybe the sale of the property might be great or something of that nature? But you would want to move to a point of being able to have that conversation, maybe council liaisons or council with EDA to see if that's a viable option, and then, you know, maybe even work with some of your real estate developers in terms of maybe listing it to see what type of activity you might entice.
Okay. Any other questions?
It's coming through.
Very good.
Is there any initial thoughts on that right now, or feedback from council to kind of say, move in that direction?
No, I would say all systems go. I just want to make sure we don't put in barriers that someone think that we can't do this or that, but no, I like that a lot.
And I think we're going to have to, you know, be willing to listen to a lot of different alternatives. 2.8 demolition cost.
Yeah.
I think any developer, whether it's a single developer or master developer, is going to want that netted out of the property value more than likely.
Probably.
The other thing is, do we know what, not the assessed value, but the developed, potential developed value is of that property?
That's market evaluation.
What's some of your thoughts on that in terms of what would come on the tax rolls based on what was built?
Yeah, yeah. What the potential developable...
You've got two city blocks on the water.
The marketability of...
Yeah, and that's not the assessed value. Assessed value is what's there now.
Right.
And I'm just saying that because we need to look at it from that perspective.
Sure.
Look at that. I think there are a couple of things that we'll make sure that we involve in this cold pepper as well. I mean, there might be some initial conversation in terms of what's the dirt worth of the property once it's cleared. It probably doesn't have as much value right now, you know, with public improvements on it, but that could be one. And then, you know, based on certain development that you might entice, we may be able to factor a couple of things. I mean, this is just mixed-use development, so it really doesn't say is it apartments or office or ground floor retail or what have you, but maybe based on the square footage, we might be able to give you some idea, you know? And then, as you've mentioned already, council and Moody, you know, what really comes to play is if you have a developer who's going to be interested in the whole site, those two blocks and the Civic Center parking lot, there are all sorts of small nuances that are a good thing to work through. You know, if the price of the land were, you know, $5 million or something like that, it might be a little bit less if they're going to do the demo. If we're going to do the demo, it might be a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, wherever that lies, it's going to be reflected somewhere in the value. The other thing, I would think that we want to entertain, see if there's any interest in a master development agreement for that area versus dealing with, you know, a piecemeal situation.
I would think it highly likely someone would want that whole piece. I mean, just as...
I agree.
The Civic Center parking lot and the two blocks. Absolutely. And that way, you know, but any other questions?
No, the only thing, I was just thinking, at one point, Bill, coming back to what you were mentioning, there is a marketability study on what were some possibilities if the area was marketed at some point. Seems we had a presentation by investors who were interested in doing a certain section from High Street on back to where we are here at the waterfront.
Might have been ULI.
I remember that vaguely here, but it was a study of the whole area, which was most comprehensive.
She's talking about the plane you did where you hit the street running through the parking garage there. I know what she's talking about, but...
Vaguely recall that.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
There was a study. I remember that.
Okay.
I guess first, remember, we don't, this money required to make these sites available, the important thing we have, we have the land.
That's right.
Which is our asset. We don't have all the money needs to prepare it, so we've got to go into any potential deal or negotiations with that as our, you know, this is a property right on the water, so...
It's prime.
And I say this every time we have one of these meetings, and we don't get to do it one time in our lifetime, so we've just got to do it right.
And I think you can craft the right deal to structure all that for developers so we're not into trying to take a hit to demolish it and all that. I think we've learned from a mistake on the Holiday Inn site, we're not going to go and invest all of Cindy taxpayers' money into something that a developer would be more than happy to do and bake it all in. I mean, I think that's the deal that you're looking for, and probably the deal you're going to get from anybody that might be interested. So, we're not exposing the city any further. But anyway, yeah, absolutely, and go forward. Any other questions or comments on it? Thank you, sir. Good job, Paul.
That's all we have, sir. There is a closed session motion.
Councilmembers, are there any liaison reports this evening? Okay, you have a motion for a closed meeting?
A move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A to discuss, A, a personnel matter involving a former employee as permitted under subsection A1, and B, the performance of specific public officials as permitted under subsection A1.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Heretic?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Yes.